Use my remote control as a gavel. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Wayne County Commission to Order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan, unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Basham?
Here.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Here.
Commissioner Haddis?
Present.
Commissioner Colleen? Commissioner Colleen? Commissioner Kinlock?
Present.
Commissioner Kneecik?
Here.
Commissioner Morecki?
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Varga?
Present.
Vice Chair Proton Badum?
Present.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Here.
Chair Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Colleen? You have a corn present.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the August 4th, 2021 meeting.
It's all moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, the minutes from the August 4th meeting. Any discussion, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Chair's remarks.
Don't have any remarks now. I'll save them till after we've heard the report from the Ways and Means Committee. We do have a lot to discuss, so I will again forego my remarks until after the report from Ways and Means. Next item.
Unfinished business, there is none listed. We are moving to item E1 forwarded from the Committee on Ways and Means Meeting held on August 26, 2021. Approval of the recommended comprehensive executive budget and appropriations ordinance for fiscal year 2122 and projected fiscal year 2223 and budget language instructions and technical amendments 1 through 8 to the Wayne County Executives 2021-21-22 Recommended Comprehensive Budget and Appropriations Ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Chair Varga of the Ways and Means Committee. Floor is yours, Chair Varga.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what I will do is I will make my remarks after we hear from Mark Ebbell, our Chief Fiscal Advisor. And after him, I would like to call on our CFO. And then I will have a little more extensive remarks after they are done. In advance, I want to thank our Fiscal Advisor, Mark Ebbell, Terrence and Mary from the Department. For working so diligently, getting us all of our information that we needed for all of our meetings in advance. And I want to thank the members of the committee for devoting all of their month of August to our budget process. So with that, I would like to turn it over to, I'm very organized, as you can see. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mark Ebbell, our Chief Fiscal Advisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we start discussion of the budget, I just wanted, for the benefit of our audience and those commissioners that are not part of Ways and Means, just some short discussion about the process. We were formally sent the budget by the administration shortly after the 4th of July holiday and we used the remainder of the month to prepare and compile budget analysis and prepare basically for the budget hearing. Hearings, the hearing started July 27th and covered eight days of departmental reports. We actually had 23 departments reporting to us through August 19th. Actually, for the first time, we had the Detroit Wayne County Joint Building Authority present, which was very interesting. Ways and Means then spent a day meeting and reviewing budget instructions. And we spent another day reviewing and discussing technical amendments. So it was a long process. And I do want to acknowledge some of the presenters. We had the presenters representing their respective departments. We had Wayne County Commission Chair Alicia Bell. We had our Prosecutor Kim Worthy. We had our Clerk Kathy Garrett. We had our Sheriff Ray Washington. We had our Treasurer Eric Sbree. We had our Chief Judge Tim Kenny. And we had our probate Judge Freddie Burton Jr., all presenting and representing their departments. I thought it was, it was a good process. So before you, you should have four documents. One is the budget book. It's approximately 450-plus pages. The ordinance itself, which really just looks like, like a bunch of accounting debits and credits. Those are the actual numbers that are the budget. The budget instructions, another long document. And then the technical amendments, there are eight technical amendments. So I'm going to just talk about some of the highlights of the budget this year. It is basically a status quo budget. After technical amendments, it comes in at 1.673, so almost $1.7 billion. That's approximately $17 million more than last year. Some of the things that are included in the budget. There's a 2.5% salary increase for all employees, not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. It takes all of our employees to not earning less than $15 an hour, so everybody will be above that rate. Included in the budget is, the anticipation is a surplus after technical amendments
It is.
of $2.1 million. So we will, we do anticipate a surplus. Through the process, this is in the technical amendments. We've increased the clerk's funding by approximately $600,000 to provide her with additional election employees, outreach employees, and sheriff protection. There's $25,000 allocated for the Wayne County Conservation. Included in the budget is ARC payment. That's the annual required contribution for our defined benefit plan of $52.4 million. And that amount is fully funded. Our defined contribution plan is also funded at $9 million. I'm going to talk about this a little bit later, but there's no transfer from the delinquent tax revolving fund for this year. We are funding the Port Authority to the, in the amount of $209,000. And that represents 50% of what the state is contributing. And the city of Detroit provides an amount equal to Wayne County. Included in the Wayne County, the commission budget is funding for some current and new committees. They include the Women's Committee, the Youth Committee, and the Ethics Committee. Included in the budget are property tax revenues of $327.5 million. Now, this is actually $24 million more than last year. 310 million is going to the General Fund. Just over $11 million to the Parks Fund. Four and a quarter million to Youth Services Fund. And approximately $1.7 million to the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund. We generally have a transfer to capital projects. But there is money in the fund balance of that fund. So this year, we anticipate spending $4.3 million in miscellaneous capital projects, but that will come from fund balance. Also, I want to talk a little bit about some of the changes to the budget instructions. We spent a lot of time trying to simplify, clarify, remove unnecessary and redundant requests. All the instructions were updated to represent the current fiscal year. And this year, we've asked the Treasurer to provide an in-depth analysis of the potential surplus of delinquent tax revolving fund. Starting with fund balance and ending with an amount that could be transferred to the General Fund. A couple of factors for that is, I'm sure you're all aware of the recent Supreme Court ruling on the Raffaelli case. And for that reason, there was no money budgeted to be transferred from the delinquent tax revolving fund to the General Fund this year. The sheriff has been asked to conduct an in-depth analysis and provide recommendation on whether to repair or replace the Marine Patrol Facility. Well as timing to implement the recommendation. And there was language in the budget instructions, and I'm going to read this one. Talking about personnel and human resources. It says, "The Department of Personnel and Human Resources shall coordinate with other departments and elected officials and focus on building the Wayne County talent pool while independent contractors, that is retired employees and thousand-hour employees, are available to train individuals for legacy building." And also, we've been asked, M D, to prepare recommendations and analysis on proposed uses of the $339 million we are receiving in ARPA monies. There is no ARPA money included in this year's budget. That represents basically the budget and the budget instructions. And just a minute I want to spend on what we learned through the process that's not really incorporated in the budget. And a lot of it speaks to challenges that will be confronting us in the future. A common theme with all departments is we are struggling to attract and retain employees. And that was almost every department that we spoke with. We currently have approximately 4,000 budget positions and greater than 1,000 vacancies. Now, the HR Department is in the process of conducting a compensation study to determine the relationship of our pay rates to market. And hopefully modifications could be made to alleviate that problem. We've learned that we can expect our ERP project may cost us $25 million more than was originally anticipated. So the overall cost of that will be approximately $56 million. There's no current funding this year for the township paving program, although it remains a high priority of the administration. And a strong commitment of theirs, they are hoping that they can provide future budget appropriations and future infrastructure monies can be used for this purpose. We learned that the Criminal Justice Complex appears to be on schedule for completion. And to end on a high note, on the pension front. As noted, our payment is $52.4 million. Our current unfunded liability is $470.6 million. Now, that number in 2013 was $854 million. So we've reduced the unfunded liability in that period by $384 million. Our pension is now 65% funded.
Wow.
And that percentage in 2013 was 44%. To put another way, if we continue to just fund the current service liability and the ARC payment, our pension will be fully funded in 14 years. That is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to call on Mr. Newsome, our CFO.
Thank you, Chair Bell, Chair Varga, and to the members of the, of the Commission. I'll add just a few things on top of what Mark, on top of what Mark said. And obviously be here to answer questions. I think Mark did an excellent job of kind of laying out the specifics of the budget. And you know, I do want to give a special thanks to his, you know, to his team working with administration and working with us to get the budget done. You know, I, when Mark specifically talked about fiscal '22. I think that a couple of things I do want to kind of expound on as well. You know, the General Fund operating mileage, Mark mentioned, that we saw that we're estimating about $309 million coming into the General Fund. And he also talked quite a bit about our challenges from a staffing standpoint. This budget does attempt to address some of the challenges that we're having in terms of staffing by giving, you know, giving a 2.5% raise across the board, a path to 15 as well. While we have a tight budget, particularly in the General Fund. We're not, we did not project any revenue growth in the general operating mileage this year. And are very cautious in terms of what we see, you know, in subsequent years. We still, you know, worked hard to make sure that we are at least addressing some of our challenges in terms of competitive compensation. But I think it's very important, I think it's very important for commissioners to kind of understand the squeeze that we're in. We don't want to go back to, you know, to where we were a half a decade, you know, really a decade ago. Being on the brink of receivership, but at the same time, our situation with staffing is not sustainable. And that's one of the reasons why the CEO wanted to make sure that we're at least starting to address, you know, some of our compensation challenges in this particular budget. And then obviously, Mark did talk about the compensation study. But, you know, I do want you all to kind of understand that squeeze that administration is trying to deal with. And this budget is a tight budget because we are doing our best to, you know, make our salaries more competitive. But at the same time, address the fact that we want to continue to make sure that we're, make sure that we are not putting ourselves in a situation where if we see a downturn, we don't see revenue growth that we slip back to the situations we've had, we've had in the past. The one thing I will also mention, and I'll do this every time I get the microphone. I have to give, you know, I have to give credit to the budget and planning team. Also want to, you know, thank, obviously thank the CEO for the opportunity to even present this budget to you. It is a labor of love, for sure. A lot of hard work to get this budget together, but, you know, without, you know, the cooperation from Mark's staff. And last but not least, the hard, hard work of the Budget and Planning Division. And support from different, you know, from countless people throughout different departments to get the budget done. We wouldn't be here. So I would be remiss if I did not mention that. With that, Chair Bell, Chair Varga, Chair Bell, thank you very much. I will turn it back over to you, Chair Bell.
Thank you. As Mark and our CFO said, we dug into many issues of the county spacing. And we were able to fix some things immediately. Like the $15 minimum wage for Wayne County employees and a little bit of race for everyone. We had long discussion and will continue as we go forward. Finding new ideas and new ways to fix vacancies. And perhaps maybe do more testing more often. There's, we found a lot of ideas that we might be able to discuss and maybe implement. Have the Personnel Director implement in the year to come. So we're going to keep working on that. And that issue is not going away because we have too many vacancies across the board. And so it's, it's, we'll have to find out exactly why. It's not just the pay, it's working conditions, it's the parking. It's, it's very complicated. But we're going to keep at it and that's going to be one of our priorities to talk about that a lot in the coming days and months. I want to thank all the commissioners who attended, who were not on the committee. And all of the members of the Board, well, the Commission for being part of the process. It was a very open process. We opened it up to everyone for suggestions and ideas. And everybody had some part of making this budget come to life. The major thing that I think we were able to do this year is to help the clerk get some more personnel to it in the Election Division especially. And a sheriff, so she has the security that she will need and some other things. So for the first time, I think I can probably say the clerk is pleased with her budget. And I really tried really hard to make that happen because sometimes in the past, that wasn't always the case where we're able to help her as much. As Mark had mentioned, we did learn a lot about the joint building, about Coleman &amp; Young and the need to pay no matter if we use those offices that are under our contract for space. So if we move the clerk out of the, out of the Coleman &amp; Young, we still have to either fill it back, fill it with someone else. Or we are in, really in a position where we have to pay two rental spaces. So that's why it's been really hard to, to, to do that kind of movement. But we're going to keep working and we're going to get a report from them to find out what spaces could be merged by other departments or other city. And see if that might leave enough room for us to give the clerk a little more space that would be maybe contin- continuous, I can't say it, continual space in one area. So we will continue to work on the building for Elizabeth Park, for the Marine Unit. And some other issues that Mark had talked about. But mostly, the biggest issue all around is the vacancies that we have. And the monies are there, so there, there is budgeted positions that we have to find out how we can fill better. And part of it, I'm sure the Director of Personnel will be. And the CEO, the administration will be looking very hard to see what we are, what we need to do to attract, whether it's whatever it is. So we have some ideas, but I don't want to throw everything out there right now. So I want to thank you, Commissioner Bell, Chair Bell, for your direction, for your support all through this. Mark and the CFO will be happy that it's over because we've been texting late into the night. And so, but it was a joy to work with everybody, even with the circumstances as they are. We couldn't give everybody everything they wanted. But I think being frugal and conservative, our budget, I am very proud of. And I will recommend that we move it forward with the proper motion at a later time. So I think Commissioner Haddis, we kind of adopted him as the eighth person on the committee. He attended, I think, all of them, or maybe most of them, Commissioner Dobbs. All, all the commissioners had chimed in at one time or another. So I really appreciate your input, your help, and your suggestions to make this budget the very good budget that it is. So I'm very proud this year to present this budget to all of you at full board. On Thursday, well, today, but for full board Thursday. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back over to you. And then we can take comments from, and questions from other members.
Thank you so much, Chair Varga. Thank you for your very hard work over these last several, several weeks. Your team, your staff, and all of the commissioners did a phenomenal job working with the budget, as always, and getting it to where we are today. I'm going to, I see a few hands, so I'm going to take hands from commissioners. And then, as I stated, I'll reserve my comments for the end of this meeting. Commissioner Clark Coleman?
I don't think that that was the first one, so I don't want to get in trouble. Okay, thank you so much. And I would like to congratulate all of the team members who worked so hard on this. I know it was not easy. So congratulations to staff, to the commissioners, and to the Executive Office and everyone involved for presenting the budget. I only have one thing to say about this budget. I am extremely happy to see that we have funded the pension up to 65%. That makes my heart beat. I'm very happy to see that. I hope that we continue to move up to a fully funded. So congratulations on that. To go from 45, how many years ago was that? To go from 45 to 65, that's fantastic.
Yes, that, that is wonderful. And we have a billion dollars in the pension fund, which is absolutely record-setting. So we are doing very well. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, yeah, I'm unmuted. I just wanted to touch on the ERP. And just to state, I think if I was correct, if it was correct. Huey, I think you would speak to this, just to confirm, it was 13 million that we lost with that contractor, right?
That's roughly correct, correct, yes.
Okay, and so the project completion, once again, is expected to be, was it $58 million? Additional 58? Or total of 58?
Total, total.
Right, okay. And where are we going to find that money? Has there been any discussions on that, where we're going to find the additional money that we, the county lost?
None that I'm prepared to discuss at this point. But, but right now, it's really just a matter of confirming that that's the number. And then, and then coming to you all through the normal appropriation process to, to get that additional money.
Okay, and are we pursuing any legal action to try to recover part of that 13 million dollars?
None that I'm prepared to discuss at this point. Yeah, none that I'm prepared to discuss at this point.
Hey, would you provide us some type of a, whether it be to our individual emails? Something that we'll be able to look at sometime soon?
As soon, as soon as humanly possible. And I have promised Chair Dobbs a detailed presentation. I'm hoping in the next GovOps meeting. And I'm committed to making that happen. More details around that and we will, that your question will be addressed. At that point, your question should be addressable.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Basham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciated Chair Varga's comments about the Marine Patrol building. But I didn't see it in the budget this year. Is it in the budget? That's my question.
I can let, I can tell you that, if I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
We put it in the budget language that by November 1st, I believe it is, the sheriff is going to use his letterhead and he is going to give us a a number, that is a hard number, that he would need to be able to build that building. So we will continue and our hope then is to make budget adjustment at that time.
Well, you know, my understanding was we'd already got there on, on the number. And so I'm a little bit shocked about that. And the other thing, five commissioners have county, townships. And I appreciate the wording, but the, what is the DPS going to do about funding issues relative to the Township Road Initiative? Which is very, very important if you have a township. And all those folks that live in those townships and people that go through them, you know, expect some kind of support from the county. And we get beat up pretty heavily on that. And I'm sure my Commissioner Haddis and three other commissioners get beat up pretty good on that one also. So what's the DPS going to do? When we get a call about they got a pothole a mile deep in a, in a, in a road, what, 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 what can we do specifically to help those townships?
I'll address the first and then I think I will let our CFO, Mr. Newsome, answer your second portion unless Mark wants to.
Can he come down and answer them in the district when, when winter gets here? Never mind, I'm just kidding. Can he come down and answer him in the district uh when when uh Winter gets here? Never mind, I'm just kidding.
Um, we had a number from the Sheriff's Office of three hundred fifty thousand, which came from Samaya. And um as a, what they would need, the sheriff would need for that uh building, um we felt that the number may be a little bit too high because at the outset, um I was asked to see if we could get two hundred fifty thousand dollars into the budget for that. So actually for a grant and and then if not, put it into the budget. So I think uh with due diligence, uh they will uh get to the number that uh will be accurate. And um so that will take some due diligence on everyone's part to uh whether to go out for bids or however they do it through uh our system. So once we have um a proposal that will be accurate, then uh then we can talk about a budget adjustment. We all agree that the Marine Unit does need that new building at Elizabeth Park. The administration is on board with that. Uh we are on board with that. So I think uh it will happen. We just need to make sure that whatever number that they need um is going to be brought forward. And um it will be brought forward and a um uh by the sheriff um quite frankly, not just by the departments uh within uh Sheriff's Department. Now, if uh Mr. Newsome.
Commissioner Varga.
Yes.
If I may, Andrew Candrevis uh from Wayne County Executive Warrant Evans Office. Mr. Newsome texted me that he had gotten kicked off. He's trying to get back on. But if I can attempt to uh just discuss briefly uh Commissioner Basham's question regarding the Township Road Initiative, uh as it was discussed in your Ways and Means hearing um uh with Director Watts, who could not be here today. But we're not stopping uh support and maintenance of our roads uh in the in the townships. All of that will continue um a- as you, I think most of you um recall in the past when we had done the Township Road Initiative, been able to fund it, that that was for special projects um identified, you know, in cooperation with those townships that we have. Uh our regular operations and projects are not stopping or grinding to a halt or changing whatsoever. Um the department and the administration hopes to bring back the Township Road Initiative to fund it, if you will. Um we are pending to see uh any federal changes for new money that might be coming in. But uh at this time, we are not able to do it in this budget. It doesn't mean it's gonna even be another full budget year. We'll wait and see how it how this goes. But um as was discussed by the Director, uh we, something that we we would like to do.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I will not be talking about these guys.
Go Taylor.
To 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 Andy, to Andy Point, Madam Chair.
To that point, uh Commissioner Haddas.
Thank you. Uh as we know, the money from the infrastructure coming. And then, as you mentioned, you keep the road initiative on the table. If we could use, because I know the federal monies have some restriction, uh but if we could use some of it and some money already budgeted in Wayne County's budget, is that the least and help us to amend the budget to certain project we have?
Uh Andy or?
Yeah, Mr. As, I I'm unfit to answer that question. I can't tell you, um you know, the complexities of money coming here and money coming there. But uh we can talk about that after this meeting. Mr. Haddas, and I can put you in touch with management budget for DPS or Director Watts, discuss that.
Okay, thank you. As as Senator uh Commissioner Basham uh mentioned, it's very uh uh difficult issue with the townships. And we need to uh really keep that in mind. It's badly needed. And uh I I really hope the infrastructure money could, eh, you know, address some of those money and then it frees some of the budget uh to something else. So it's my thought about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Basham, we still have the floor.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kenlock.
Oh, yes, okay. Oh, um yes, Madam Chair. I've just wanted to say that I absolutely um appreciate um appreciate the uh the uh the hard work done um by the Chair of Ways and Means, um Chair Varga um as well as um as well as uh you and and you and the uh central staff team in um addressing a number of the different questions that I had um as well as the questions that I was getting um as, you know, as relates to from, you know, constituents in regards to this budget process. Uh we have made some incredible headway and I I really appreciate um uh first and foremost, the process. Um this was my first time participating in uh the budgeting process and I can tell you um that the administration um um a- as well as uh the Chair and you have been very helpful in in getting some very important um appropriations inside of this um budget, inside of this budget. We also have to um recognize that Wayne County came from some very challenging times and from coming from the outside and now being a commissioner and being a part of this process. Um I absolutely see the hard work over the years that has been put into place um um to uh bring about where we are right now, where we're able to boast about the pensions, where we're able to talk about on the fund balance, where we actually able to have a surplus as we're developing this budget. So um hats off and um uh to to everyone who was involved in this process and also for the assistance that they gave me in learning uh this process as well. I love you, Chair Varga, as well as Chair Bell, because you all, you all really um um had a lot of patience with me in regards to this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Glad your first uh experience uh with Ways and Means and the budget was very informative for you. Uh Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to commend you uh as the Chair of the Commission as well as Chair Va- Varga uh for her leadership in this budget process. Uh I am really excited about the fifteen dollars and up uh for all employees and two percent raises. Uh I think that talks to our uh ability to retain employees. And then we are also going to implement some strategies around attracting and um building on our legacy. So I I think that is uh really, really important uh in how we move forward. In addition, uh throughout this whole process, we were able to uh move along the the jail um project. Uh and I want to commend the administration and all the work that they've done to make sure that this jail um is completed uh almost uh on time. So um job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much. Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I just want to thank everybody. This was a great process. That went very smoothly and I'm honored to be on the Ways and Means Committee. I'd just like to echo the same thing as some of my colleagues about the um the uh Township Road Initiative. And of course, we all know that's not just filling potholes. It's pretty significant work that goes on. And we had to put it on hold last year, so I'm hoping it, like um Mr. Candrevis said, that it is a high priority. And we can initiate that again. And I just want to say, I just have one concern going forward. Um and that's with the Prosecutor's Office. Although she did get significant monies, um they still have a problem with uh uh retaining prosecutors. And the Clerk's Office has um problems retaining clerks that cover the courts. Quite a few have left during COVID. They're trying to get back on their feet to start jury trials again. So I just want to make those comments, but overall, I'm very happy with the budget and of course, we'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um just a quick question about the um HR Department's uh salary study. Do we, and I don't know if anyone's on that can answer the question, um do we have any idea on when that will be completed? And then um also is HR, is the HR Department reviewing all of our um the independent consultants and LLC contractors that we've hired that are meant to be um temporary fill-ins? Um are they reviewing that? And then is there some sort of mechanism that the commissioners will review those? Or are we going to be approving the their contracts at some point?
Um, go ahead, Commissioner Varga.
If if someone is on there who can answer from them, I do have somewhat an answer. So let's see if someone is here from the department first, Madam Chair.
Okay, is uh anyone, is uh Steve on? If not, uh Mr. Newsome? About the HR question?
Uh I I don't think Steve is on, so uh you know, I will um entertain that question. We are finalizing the terms of um from an agreement with I with what with a consultant to help us. Um I believe that the results of the comp study, you know, again, this is high level. There are the dealing with staffing issues, there are delays. So I don't, I think that sometime this calendar year is is um probable um in terms of at least the first wave of it. But I'm not prepared to talk in in detail about exactly when that will be delivered, um so forth and so on, because you know, uh the PHR Director will be more on will be more in line to be able to answer more detailed questions about about the results of the study and what you could expect when, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And Commissioner Dobbs, I would suggest that maybe having that um as a presentation at Government Ops Committee to get a deeper dive into that, because that's a very good question.
Okay, is there um, oh, I was gonna ask Commissioner Varga, do you know anything about the um like the independent consultants that we have that are just meant to be like temporary? Um is there any review on that or to, are the commissioners gonna review any of that at any point?
When we had uh the Personnel Director uh in all of the above that you had mentioned is being studied, uh we also, he's also going to check on how to merge some positions, not merge, but figure out how the fifteen dollar an hour persons now uh might need a little bit of boost uh because of the minimum wage. So there's a lot going on in the department and uh we promised that we would bring the Director back to talk about that and some other ideas that we might have um in order to fill vacancies. So I think with your committee and ours, uh I think we're gonna have a lot of input as commissioners um in shaping and forming some of the decisions and policies and assisting here the Director and the administration. So I think this is one thing that we can all work together, commissioners and the administration, and to to make sure that uh we'll come up with a good policy.
Okay.
On that, on ma- ma-
Yes, thank you. Bye.
Ma'am Chair, I just wanted to piggyback on, when I came into um um office, uh I immediately had conversations with you, uh Chair Varga and the County Executive regarding this whole issue of compensation and wages. Um and uh I was gonna introduce a resolution, introduce an ordinance. Um but you three asked me to wait um until we got into the budget process so that we could actually try, because it's something that you all have already been aware of and was looking to address and ask um for us to just try to make this uh work this out in this budget. And that's exactly what has happened. And um I, and as I continue to talk to you all about uh the con- con- the the um the concerns that have come to all of us from labor unions and from the elected departments and appointed department heads about the compensation piece, um I believe that this definitely one, just, you know, someone who's new to this, but this is definitely one thing that all of us have um in common as it relates to trying to address. So uh I'm really looking forward to that um report coming out and then us trying to find a way to actually address uh this compensation issue, because it it it's something that we just cannot uh continue to um I have happened. Um we see in the Prosecutor's Office that McComb County, uh Oakley County folks are taking uh the prosecutors who have a lot of knowledge and experience um from Wayne County, as well as we see in the courts and elsewhere. So um I just want to just add that to sense that uh I absolutely agree with uh Chair Varga, that this is something that we all can agree on.
Uh Commissioner Dobbs, you have the floor still?
Thank you. Um uh thank you, Commissioner Varga. Um I expect this will be a continuing dialogue and we'll continue to work on this issue. Um just one final thing, um I would like us to continue working to get that Township Road Initiative uh reinstated. Um reinstated, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, um Commissioner Varga. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baydon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh first, uh I'd like to thank you, Chair Bell, for continuing to exhibit such an outstanding leadership during these uh challenging uh times that we're going through. Uh thank you to our committee chair, uh uh Commissioner Varga uh and all the members of the commission uh that participated and all the uh the staff from the administration for working so hard on this. Uh I also uh want to thank Mark Abbo and everyone that's involved uh on the commission staff for working to put this together. I'm very glad to see that there's an increase in the compensation for county employees. Uh I'm also very happy uh that uh the Marine Unit for the Sheriff's Office uh uh will be seeing uh an improvement in their facility. Uh we will be watching the process, obviously, and we will like Commissioner Basham and many of us who visited the facility, we fully support all these changes. Uh it's a little bit troubling to see that the Wayne uh the Prosecutor's Office is not able to retain some of their staff and having a hard time recruiting uh obviously for uh the compensation uh rate uh that they have to offer. But overall, I'm grateful for all the people that were involved in putting this budget together and and job well done, uh Commissioner Varga.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've been on Ways and Means since I came back ten years ago. And let me just say this, um just let you know when we continue to work on issues um that things do happen. Uh I don't always say a lot, but it is the best budget that um we've had since I've been here. So I want to thank this uh the um County Executive and his staff and you, Madam Chair, and your staff and and um Commissioner Varga for all that you all have done in this budget and to help all these different departments. Um like the clerk and uh the prosecutor, I I remember when we were just trying so hard and they was having such a hard time. Even though they're still having some difficulty in keeping the employees there. So hopefully, we can continue to work on that so that we can have the dollars uh that um they can fully fund their departments and be able to those when they, we find out that they're leaving, maybe we can offer them some better compensation to keep them there, rather than hiring new ones and having to train them to leave. So again, thank you all for all that you've done, each and every one who had anything to do with the budget. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you. Uh we have Commissioner Haddas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, since two thousand, January two thousand fifteen till now, uh I've been watching the difficult process the county went through. When we have two thousand fifteen budget was on the edge of bankruptcy and when we have two thousand fifteen budget was on the edge of bankruptcy and edge of uh, almost to be total failure. And the new administration came and, uh, tried to work with everybody, assembled the support by everybody by realizing we have a difficult situation and we need to work together to come to, uh, a huge success like today, like this budget. If you compare where we been, where we at today, you take your hat off to the leadership in this county, uh, from the CEO to the Chairman of the Commission, the Chairman of the, uh, Way and Mean, and the two, uh, highly intelligent CFO and financial advisor for the commission. It's a teamwork. It takes a lot of hard work and take a lot of compromise. Sometime we don't get what we want hundred percent, but at least we moving in the right direction. Uh, and that is the huge success for the county. And I think, uh, thank you to all of you, the staff, the leadership, uh, everybody who really have anything to do with this budget, my hat off to all of you. And I hope we continue to work on this level to increase this huge, I call it a huge success uh, for the future of our county because we have so many things, uh, it's been done and so many things on the edge of completion like the jail facility. And I hope, uh, we'll continue work on that level and I will congratulate you all and thank you for, uh, the, uh, great, uh, success, uh, you accomplished for, uh, this budget and the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I see Vice Chair Palomera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to congratulate Chairwoman Varga and the members of Ways and Means for crafting a budget along with the administration that by and large makes a whole lot of sense and, and once again continues a, a nice string of balanced budgets. My, my only comment would be this, and that goes to the Township Roads Initiative. Uh, because messaging is a large part of what we do and because township roads are going to be maintained anyhow, I guess I'm a little perplexed why we still don't call it a Township Roads Initiative uh, when we're gonna be spending money and fixing roads and doing what needs to be done in townships anyhow. Uh, I, I just think it sends a message that something is being lost in townships when it, it really shouldn't be. And, uh, I would just hope that, that we could get that program, uh, up and running again, even if it's funded at a lesser amount, because township roads do matter. And, uh, I think it's important that we acknowledge that. Once again, I'll be supporting the budget and congratulate all of you on the job very well done. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Um, CFO Newsom, I see your hand is up. I don't know if this does not taken down from your previous comments or if you had an additional statement.
I, I, I do have an additional, additional statement if I may. I did wanna go back to, to Commissioner Anderson's, uh, question. I wanted to clean something up. Uh, I went back and checked some numbers, uh, Commissioner. We had projected to have spent eleven point two million through this fiscal year with Cherry Road. Because we, uh, we, uh, agreed, and I'll get more detail about this when I present in GovOps. But because we agreed with Airo that they needed to cease and desist because of the challenges that we had had on the ERP, we cut them off and we ended up, um, we ended up, um, as of July, we have only spent just about roughly seven point four million with them. And so one of the reasons we wanted to talk that through, obviously, was to make sure that they weren't continuing to work and bill us, um, and it was one of the things that was very important to us. And I explained, I don't wanna get too deep into the, into any legal matters or potential legal matters, um, right at this moment. But I will say that the, this projected send through fiscal twenty-one was eleven point two. I wanted to clear that up for the record, um, considering that, um, you know, you had asked the question and presented thirteen. And I know that was a ballpark estimate, so the thirteen was really eleven point two and that was projected through this fiscal year, which of course, we're not gonna hit that number.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Appreciate that. And again, we look forward to getting, um, more details at the Government Operations Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Chair Varga, I turn it back over to you for any final comments and then I'll make my final comments.
Um, I thank everyone for participation. Um, if, um, hopefully I tried to work so we could get a consensus, uh, budget again like we did last year. And, uh, whether we call it a hat trick or a trifecta, I hope that, uh, you will all be able to make that happen for me. And that would make, uh, our Wayne County, uh, residents, um, uh, very happy that, uh, we have come this far in such a short time. And it's all because of the dedication of the administration. I cannot tell you how joyful it is to work with the administration, with the, uh, CFO who answers texts, who answers calls. And, uh, I just wanted to, um, touch base on one other issue that, uh, we talked about, but it's not, uh, funded as such. But we're going to do some work with, uh, the jails and the mental health and the courts. Um, and I believe there's going to be, uh, conferences between the clerk, uh, the judges and the prosecutor to see how we could coordinate some more in order to fill some of the vacancies and, uh, uh, for us to use our dollars to the maximum, uh. And so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, we wanna keep everybody out of, uh, jail who have hea- health, mental health issues. So Ways and Means is looking forward to, uh, assisting the administration in, uh, and the judges and the everybody, uh, that who is going to be involved, the prosecutor, the clerks and, um, um, the administration to make sure that people with mental illness will get the help that they need and not be put in jails. So that's a big issue for us that we're gonna be following, um, soon after, um, we start this new budget. So discussions will be ongoing and so I expect a very good year and help coming to the ones that really need it. And, uh, I'm looking forward to working on, on those issues, uh, with all of you. Uh, with that, I think I covered just about everything that, um, I needed to for, for this budget.
All right, fantastic. Well, again, let me thank, uh, Chair Varga and every member of the Ways and Means Committee as well as all of the commissioners that participated in the budget process. Um, as was stated, we started this process in July. Uh, Mark, uh, Mary and Terrence, they do an exceptional job every year with getting us everything that we need to have a smooth budget process and to have very in-depth conversations in our budget hearings. So thank you, Mark, Terry and Terrence for all that you continue to do. Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Um, I know you're still a little new, but I guess, uh, I can't call you new anymore, but I believe this is your second budget. So thank you so much for all that you've done to, to take a deep dive and jump right in here and help Wayne County as our CFO. To all of the CEO staff, um, as Commissioner Varga mentioned, there were many phone calls throughout days, evenings, weekends, uh, making sure that we were able to get a consensus budget and that's what we have here today. So thank you all so much. The two percent increase in salaries, the fifteen dollars an hour for all of our employees, that was very important and we wanted to make sure that that happens and we're very happy that that's in the budget. The talent pool is such an incredible issue right now. Um, although we have many successes in this budget, we still have the challenge of retaining our great employees and then also getting more employees here involved, um, in our Wayne County government. At one time, you know, Wayne County government position was the cream of the crop and we want that to be the case again. So we have to continue to attract and do whatever we can to attract talent to participate in Wayne County government because we know we do great things here in Wayne County. Um, the Township Roads Initiative, there is money, as that was stated, that will continue to go towards our Township Roads. I'm hopeful that when we get our infrastructure dollars, when that passes Congress, that that would really put an additional amount of dollars into our Township Roads. But those in townships don't, uh, fear that you will continue to get, um, assistance from Wayne County for those roads. And additional, uh, for, uh, the, the trailer, um, at the Marine Unit, that is something that although it's not specific in the budget, it is a commitment that we are going to get that trailer done in this, uh, next fiscal year. So, uh, don't worry, Commissioner Basham, that and the Sheriff Department Marine Unit, that is going to happen. So we are all committed to that. So again, I just wanna thank everyone for your hard work. Thank you for everything that you've done to get us to this point. I'm so happy that it's, um, still in August and we're done, albeit the last day in August, we're getting the budget done in August, which may be a record. So I want, again, that goes to all the hard work that everyone has put in to make that happen. And for the benefit of, uh, those who are listening in, uh, this is our committee of the whole to discuss our budget. Our budget year begins on October first. And as was stated earlier, we do the budget in the summer so that we can have a budget to begin on October one. And that's what this meeting is here for us today, to discuss the budget and then, um, hopefully move it to our full board meeting for a final disposition, which will be on this Thursday, September second. So without any further ado, I'll entertain a motion on item one. Yes.
Uh, I will make the motion. Uh, I just wanted to say that because of the Zoom meeting, we had many union, uh, representation as well and they were able to get some of the answers on time, uh, during the process. So I wanna thank them as well for attending our meetings. With that, I move to move for approval of the recommended comprehensive executive budget and appropriation ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two and projected fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and budget language instructions and technical amendments to the Wayne County Executives twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two recommended comprehensive budget and appropriation ordinance as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on this item?
Madam Chair, just for clarification.
Yeah.
I believe that this item will still have to be returned after the meeting for some additional adjustments. I just wanted to put that on the record and fiscal staff, please correct me. Will I need to return this after the meeting?
Mark.
Uh, I'm gonna defer to Terrence on that one. Terrence, I believe the answer is yes.
Terrence.
Let's say. Yes, the Zoom was having problems. Yes, there's a clerical error on the appropriation that needs to be returned and sent back up for full board.
Thank you.
So we'll have that, um, for full board, that correction.
Thank you.
It has been moved and supported. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Will that be a motion to, um, have the corrections before the full board?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yes, is my vote.
Commissioner Basham?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dobbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
I.
Commissioner Kenlap?
Yes.
Commissioner Kanesic?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for everyone's hard work. Okay, next item, please.
Such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
There are none. Next item.
Public comments.
Okay. At this time, um, if you could unmute the Zoom, if there is anyone here who would like to make public comments, you have two minutes to do so. And, um, if you could, please state your name and I see a hand. Celeste Mintec?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, committee members, for, um, the opportunity to address the board today. Um, I am a concerned Wayne County citizen, uh, resident and activist for body autonomy with regards to medical freedom. Recently, an elected official from this committee directed and demanded concerned constituents to shut their pie holes and to take the shot. That response was divisive and absolutely displayed the inability to govern through these challenging events and polarizing issues. I am no longer wondering if any of you share the same concerns as a lot of constituents with regards to protecting the doctor and patient relationship or the vaccination status of, of your constituents. It is clear that this committee is supportive of unconstitutional mandates which are in violation of the U.S. Bill of Rights, U.N. Human Rights Charter and the Nuremberg Codes that were drafted to protect individual sovereignty, conscience and free association. Will this committee continue to engage in unlawful activities by violating the Supreme Law of our land and international human rights law, all for the common good? Using tactics of coercion, shame, shutting down differing viewpoints is not a part of informed consent. Medical tyranny and discrimination is not only divisive, it's criminal. What will we come next? You guys recommend mandates to withdraw government aid from families and businesses, coercion in the workplace to create hostile work environments for employees or segregated water fountains and play yards in our schools. This will not stand. This medical tyranny and medical discrimination that you all support will not stand and the residents of Wayne County deserve better from their elected officials. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much for joining us. Uh, any other, uh, public comments? You have two minutes. Would there be anyone else? If you could please state your name.
Cause I can't time to this computer because required.
Any other comments? Just jump on in. I don't see any hands raised, but if you have, uh, on the telephone or if you are on Zoom, you have two minutes for public comments. Okay.
I would like, I, I would like to chime in. My name is Michael Lake. And I had a question, uh, I, I couldn't have said it better than, uh, Celeste there, but, uh, uh, more so on the budget side of this. I'm very proud that you guys are able to move forward and have the additional two percent added. That, uh, that definitely makes me happy. You guys do a lot behind the scenes. Uh, trash pickup, the streets, the sewers, the water. So that's definitely appreciated. Where did we go from here when people start leaving Wayne County due to the sheer negligence of how it's ran? How do you guys proceed to move forward getting paid if nobody is here to pay?
Okay, thank you, sir. During public comments, we don't do back and forth. If you'd like to, uh, engage with your commissioner, um, we can certainly find out who your commissioner is and you can have a conversation with your commissioner directly. Thank you.
Absolutely. That, that was more so just a thought for you guys to think about, uh, just as a taxpaying citizen as, as well as all of us here, just, uh, something that's to on for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see SBB hand raised.
Yes, hello. My name is Stephanie Butler and, um, I'm calling in for two reasons. One is that, um, I don't follow along with you guys that often. I think the first time I watched a meeting, I saw, uh, Commissioner Bashar tell his constituents to shut their pie holes. When did we ever in, in government, elected officials ever think that we had the right or the audacity to speak to those who elected us in such a condescending manner? I think it's highly inappropriate. I think people need to remember that constituents exist, recalls exist for a reason. And I think we should be very careful on how we speak to people, whether we agree with them or we do not. It is never okay for a public officer to speak that way to anyone. Two, uh, I have a concern, I guess, about, um, Two, I have a concern, I guess, about, you guys run the health department, basically. And here's a thought I want to leave you with. Per the CDC guidelines, we have to have proper ventilation within the schools per person. It all has to add up. We don't have that in my school district. Yesterday, when I attended, the school walked in, I saw assistant principals with their masks down below their nose. At the same time, they're chasing children down the hallway. I could not breathe. I made a video right after. My face was soaking wet with the heat. It is awful. It is awful and there's nobody to hold the school accountable for their end of holding up, making sure our kids can breathe while they're masked. And so, I just want to point that out, that there are these problems going on while you're there making rules and man.
Thank you. You're at a two-minute.
Those are getting away with this. No, I'm sorry. I had a call come in. So, I just want someone to look into those health concerns for our children. I'm not calling to say mask, unmask, whatever. I mean, I believe that I should have my choice. But if we are going to mask, we need to make sure that our children can breathe. And I encourage you, stop in your local school, walk through and if you can breathe in there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comment. Thank you. Ms. Heather?
Hi, yes. Yeah, thank you so much. My name's Heather. I'm from Plymouth. Thank you guys for all that you're doing. And I just want to say a big here, here to the couple other folks that have spoken. And just as a mom of three young kids myself, I really liked the original plan of sort of offering all the facts and then allowing each school to make the best decision for their community. You know, like with most decisions, I think these are made best on individual and family and school levels. And I would just really like to see from the committee what actual science and studies were used to determine this mandate. Because as far from my research, there's not one single peer-reviewed study comparing requiring masks in schools that made any statistically significant difference in spreading COVID. And if you actually compare other countries in Europe that have never masked or gave that mass choice, right? That's what we want, just mass choice for best decisions. Or you compare to other states. The outcomes on the spread of COVID, hospitalizations and deaths are the same. Or sadly, even for our state in New York that had very strict restrictions, actually, the outcomes were worse. So, I just really would love to hear from the committee, hopefully on Thursday's meeting, what specific studies were used to come to this new mandate. So, thank you again so much. And I just would really encourage you guys to stick with your original plan of offering some really good solutions for schools and then allowing each school to make the best decision for the community.
Thank you. Thank you so much for zooming in. Any additional comments? We're under public comments. I see no additional comments. Are there any emails received, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I did just receive two emails. The first is from Rianna Ven-Dramony. Any and all mandates related to COVID-19 are a violation of our constitutional rights. And in terms of our children, a violation of our parental rights. These mandates must end immediately. Violation of our rights will no longer be tolerated. The second one says, "Good morning. Thank you for the detailed conversation regarding the 2122 Wayne County budget. Considering the significant revenue shortfall, salary increases and increased budget allocation to the pension fund and other items. How do you intend to fund, one, the enforcement of the recent emergency order requiring masks in schools? And two, the increased demand need for pediatric mental health support services that Wayne County families have experienced as a result of the past 18 months of COVID-19 restrictions and mandates, including but not limited to depression, anxiety, suicide and suicide prevention, substance abuse and child abuse. Three, likely upcoming lawsuits from Wayne County constituents and others as it relates to any and all current or future COVID-19-related mandates. Thank you. Wayne County stopped the mandate on our kids."
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Galaxy Note 9 will be our last public comment.
Yeah, I do. My name is Justin. I'd have to, I'm just getting on here to, I don't usually get on these things. But because of the new mask mandates, I decided it's pretty important. And I'd have to agree with Mr. Lake. There's so many people speaking on leaving Wayne County because of all this. It's kind of, it's ridiculous. I've lived here my whole life and I just don't understand when you guys became able to make a mandate that's just such a blanket mandate over everybody. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
Also, Justin, can we get the spelling of your last name, please? Justin?
Yes, Raymond, R.A.Y., M.O.N.D.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you all so much. Oh, sorry, I see one more. Billy Schultz.
I logged on from the beginning. And one, well, there was two of y'all that spoke about how when you guys seen someone with this where a little thing, you asked them to remove it, which they did. But your statement was, the last person that put that on there died. Now, right now, we have a pandemic. It's not really the COVID in Wayne County. Do you guys know the statistics for how many youth, I'm speaking of our youth, committed suicide or self-harming in the last 18 months? Because in January, I had to dial 911 because my 13-year-old tried to commit suicide. And I went to a local hospital, which was Wayne.E.R. And in one hour, one hour, there was four students between 13 and 16 who arrived in that ER who tried to commit suicide. So, we need to think of our mental health. You guys spoke about mental health earlier. But you guys are speaking mental health of our adults. But what about our mental health of our youth? That's where it starts. We need to look at what we can do within our school system of our mental health and what this 18-month have done. Everybody has an equal right to education. When you have someone struggling for mental health and other issues, you cannot mask some of these kids. You just can't. And those are the kids that need to be in the school face-to-face. And nobody's talking about that. Nobody is talking about our mental health issues that we're having right now. Because we in Wayne County have lost more children in the last 18 months than we have lost of COVID. We haven't lost any of our COVID individuals. But we are losing our children at high numbers. And this is our future. We keep losing our youth? We are losing our future.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. You have two minutes. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mama Bear.
Hello.
Go ahead.
I wanted to speak up for the children. I understand that you're put in a difficult position being Wayne County, making these choices, but for our school districts during the COVID situation. But I still want to voice an idea for you. Clear-mouth masks, maybe for preschool through grade three at least. Children learn from expressions from others and we're going to lose a generation of children under your administration and your choices. This is your legacy. I personally am opposed to any of the forced mandates. One again and again, it is proven that COVID is 99.8% treatable and recoverable. Also, it is proven that K through six are at the lowest risk for even passing it. You're putting our children's heart, lungs, brains at risk from recycled personal air, lack of oxygen and permanent danger that cannot be reversed. This is your legacy. You do not know each of our child's personal family health history to know how dangerous this choice is for their life and health. And you don't have the right to take away a parent's choice for what is best for their child. These are not your children and not for you to decide for them or the parents. This is the legacy. This is your legacy. Masks are not proven to even be effective. And what it does to social, emotional and physical damage to the children will be irreversible. You should feel real ashamed. And personally, if I was making the choices you were, I'd be very embarrassed. This is your legacy. You have been voted in. And we have our trust in you to make right decisions that are not experimental, not scientifically proven and that put our children's health at risk. And this is exactly what you're doing. You will be remembered for the decisions you make for putting our children's physical, emotional and social health at risk.
Also, can we get from Mama Bear, can we get your spelling of your name, please?
Is it required?
Um, yeah, yes.
Targeted. Okay, you can just put it as, um, parents for children. Thank you.
Valerie, you're next. Okay, we'll go to Lisa.
Hi, my name is Lisa Warner. I'm a resident of Wayne County. I wanted to go back to one of the callers made, was talking about the requirements by the CDC. And from what I understand, reading your guys' public health return-to-school roadmap, that we are following the guidelines that the CDC set out for masks. I don't understand why we're mandating masks on children when it does not prevent the spread. Not even, not even close to 95% if they're wearing homemade masks. But why aren't we making sure that these schools have adequate ventilation systems? And that CDC is actually requiring, they're putting in their guidelines that that's part of the roadmap to beating this virus is making sure that the buildings have adequate ventilation systems. And that doesn't even get talked about. All we're talking about is putting a piece of cloth on our kids and sending them into schools that had, most of them don't even have air conditioners, let alone a cleaning system to clean the viruses and germs out of the air. And we wonder why our kids are sick all season long. Another thing I really don't get, and this came to me yesterday. If masks are so important and there's actually, per the CDC, a way that is supposed to be worn, how it's supposed to be washed, how it's supposed to be cared for. There's no roadmap on how to, how parents are actually doing this. And I don't understand if it's that important to cover our mouths. Why aren't masks being given out freely to these families for their children? That's another thing that blows my mind. If it's so important that we should be wearing a mask and it should be a certain kind of mask, why aren't they free?
So much. I think that's your time. Thank you so much. We'll go to Valerie.
Hi, my name is Amanda. I'm a. Hello.
Could you mute everyone? Octavia, Valerie, you're up.
I am an employee of a district in Wayne County. I took a leave of absence last year for one whole year because I refuse to wear masks in a building, knowing the harm that masks do versus what has been publicized as the mask being able to help. It was a big sacrifice for me to take off from my job for a whole year because of these mandates. I was looking forward to returning to my school district this year. Until Wayne County put this mandate in place, our superintendent now has changed his no-mask mandate to say because of the Wayne County order, we now have to wear masks all day in a classroom and enforce that with our students. It's absolutely absurd. We are in America. We have freedom of choice. Stop taking people's choices away to make decisions for their own families. If a family chooses to put a mask on their child and sends them to school, let them do it. But for you to make this a mandate is ridiculous. God does not force us to do it. Who are you to force human beings to put masks on their face when they don't want to? This is absurd. It needs to stop. It needs to end. We've gone too far with this in this country and it needs to be over with. Most of you, as elected officials, as elected officials, you need to listen to the majority constituents. And we're saying, end it and stop it now. I want my job. I want to return to my job. But I will refuse to wear a mask all day. And you should not be imposing this on the school systems in Wayne County and on citizens of Wayne County as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Phone number, do you have your last name, please spell it for us for the record, Valerie?
A-U-S-T-I-N.
Thank you. Phone number 248, last digits are 1928. If you can unmute the phone number 1928.
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Lisa Whitmore, W-H-I-P-M-O-R-E, resident of Northville, Michigan. And I hope you guys are, based on the public comments, hearing loud and clear from the parents that voted you guys in office. The subject that is truly on the heart of everyone now and the minds of everyone now. And all we are asking, and we are asking this based on our children not being at high risk for this disease, our evidence-based medicine not being there, like a caller previously mentioned. I recently requested information on exactly, you know, where that studies came from in terms of number of cases in our county, deaths, including the Delta variant. So, I can speak to that at a later date. But I pray that you guys are hearing loud and clear. All people are asking for is a choice. There doesn't need to be any mandates, last-second mandates, the day before school begins. I pray that you guys are hearing the people you voted for and will rebuke the mandates that are going on in Wayne County and give parents their choice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think that concludes our public comments. Thank you all for doing your public comments. And as a point of education, every county has a public health officer, someone who was trained in public health. And those officers are the ones that makes these decisions, not the legislative body. Thank you all so much. Next item, please.
The next item is adjournment.
So, move. So, move by Commissioner Scott, supported by.
Support.
Okay, thank you so much. Move all in favor of a journey, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you all so much. We'll see you on Thursday. Have a great day.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.